All right, good morning, everybody. It's say thirty. We'll call this morning as a meeting to order. Our first item is the approval of the agenda and it looks like we have one agenda addition, which is a request from for a gross maximum price change order number two. It's in regards to the construction project.
Moving to approve with the addition.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If all is the same. Motion carried. Decisions to be heard. We have most citizens in the audience today to be heard, so we'll move on to approval of bills and vouchers.
Move to second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Any favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If all is the same. Motion carried. This time, we'd like to just give recognition to West Central Minnesota EMS for a $1,850 contribution towards an emergency management drone. I'm sure that Brian will like that. We just want to say thank you to West Central for that donation. Our page thirty-five item is a budget presentation from our extension office. Good morning, Ben.
And Mr. Chair.
Yes.
That the extension budget is on page thirty-nine. And also in reference to the budget, I did hand out the new request proposals that we hadn't handed out to you before. And some of those you're aware of, the correctional ones, the juvenile detention one, we have not met with juvenile yet, but they are adding one secure bed, if you remember right, and the price of a secure bed is eighty-three five. And then, I don't, we haven't met with social services either, so I don't have any explanation of the item that's in there. And then juvenile has the, down on the bottom, too, he lists the eighty-three five as income on it, and then has some other expenses, and we'll be reviewing that.
What page did you say?
Thirty-nine for extension, yes.
Okay, well, let's deal with extension now.
Good morning. Thanks for the time. Good to see you all. We are proposing, I'll go through each of the changes one by one, but in total, it's proposed to be a $6,837 increase. Most of that, those changes have to do with the changes to the contract with the county for the university employees, and then the changes to Heather Weber's salary and benefits, the support staff in the office. So those are reflected in line sixty-one oh five, salaries regular. That's the contract for Randy Nelson, the horticulture and agriculture educator, and the two four H program coordinators, Mitzi Marlin and Lisa Wilson-Bauer. And then the next set of changes goes down to line sixty-one-ten, and then the following benefits, those reflect the changes for Heather Weber's position. And then the rest of the changes in postage, sixty-two oh two, we have, don't have a lot of needs in that anymore, so we're dropping that by fifty dollars. And then dropping down to line sixty-three oh two, equipment repair and maintenance. This is the account that reflects our printing costs through our copier and other outside printing that we do. And we are proposing an increase in that. We used to use the copier that was in the family service center, and the county had removed that equipment, and so now we have some increased printing just in our office. And then further down, sixty-six oh seven, that's our copier contract. We had a new copier through Toshiba, and the monthly charge for that actually went down when we got the new machine. So that's a decrease. And then we also felt we could decrease our miscellaneous expenses to a hundred dollars. So aside from the staff changes, just looking at our office accounts, from those, it's a small decrease of thirty dollars. Regarding the staff positions from the university employees, twenty-eighteen is the last year of the contract with the university and the county, so next year, we'll be coming forward with a new three-year agreement and proposal.
So the, Ben, the two point five percent there, is that, is that the anticipated increase for state employees then, or is it, so when we, you're showing a two point five percent increase in salaries, that's for, that's for?
It is a, the twenty-eighteen increase for the university employees is a two point five percent increase.
Okay. And then the, which line item was it for your, for the county employee?
Sixty-one-ten.
Sixty-one-ten. Is that, is that, is that a, you're showing one point five, is that step or what is that? Because the COLA, we list separate for all county employees, don't we?
Three point eight five is what it's showing.
Wait.
I mean, I thought it would be a step.
Yeah, that would, yes.
Should be a step.
It has nothing to do with that.
Not, should not have to do with that.
I just wanted to make sure.
Although, check it for us.
I wanted to make sure he didn't, wasn't doubling up. Okay. Any other questions?
The other thing to note, we have the ten thousand dollars in revenue at the top. That is the contribution that we make through some grant funding that we received to go towards Lisa's four H position. That's the part of the Glendon Farms grant donation to our four H program.
What year is that donation on?
I think we're on our third year.
Of a five?
Five, yep.
All right, well, it's, it's.
I know, since we added that half position and stuff like that, I don't know, there's really been a lot of activity in four H, I mean, it seems to be new groups starting and stuff like that. And, I mean, you go to the fair, it's, it's all four H there, you know, it just, so I think that's our involvement as far as the county with the four H, getting our young people involved in this, and they've got a lot of people involved in it. Let's see what they're doing.
That was, that's always been my deal with it, too, is just making, making sure our investment is paying off by having young kids involved. So anytime you can provide us with information that shows that we've got good activity going on with youth, then that's good.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. I don't think we have any more questions.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Okay. All right, we'll move into our next budget presentation from building maintenance. Joe and Georgia here.
And Mr. Chair. Yeah, page twenty-two, and then seventy-three and seventy-four, so it's kind of spread out. Hopefully, they'll clarify that when they go through of what, why it is like it is, because they do split the personnel costs and things between family service and maintenance. So it's page twenty-two, and then seventy-three and seventy-four, but twenty-two first, I believe.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Who would like to start? Georgia, you want to go first?
Sure, I can go first. I don't know, our page numbers might be a little bit off, but my, the one I'll be reviewing for the family service center is sixty-five, one-eleven.
Will that be the same code? What, what page did you say it was, Brian?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two? Okay. And you want us to go through line by line?
No, I don't, I don't think you need to do that. I think you need to highlight the, where you're high and where you're low and.
Okay. Our salaries at the family service center budget, they increased slightly. We actually didn't hire additional staff, but we did between Joe's central admin budget or the courthouse budget and the family service center. We actually aligned the staff where they were working, where before, they were somewhat split a little bit more on the courthouse side, so now we actually align them to which building they work in. So the people that are working in the family service center are charged to the family service center, and then the remaining are maintenance and custodial staff.
So is that why we're seeing an eleven percent increase on this one? Because it's going to be lower someplace else because of the shift?
In the courthouse.
Okay.
Other than that, we don't really have any major impacts, I guess, on the family service center budget. Line items are pretty much going to remain the same. We did not include any increases as far as staff or anything. We are looking at, right now, our ratio for staff, we have several, we actually have about twenty, some variable hour custodians total between the two buildings, or, excuse me, all the buildings, and we are looking at possibly into the future, replacing maybe one of those for the full time, but then we would decrease our variable hours and offset that. Otherwise, we're pretty much remaining the same in the family service center budget. I think we will be over slightly this year. We didn't plan for the overlay. We did plan, I should say, but we didn't plan to do it this year, but I think because of the jail on the campus project, that's going to be coming out this year. And then we also had a fire alarm update in equipment that we were required to do per code that we didn't foresee coming right this year, so that's included, too, that will be in this year's 2017 budget, which may put us over slightly, but.
Wasn't the, wasn't the overlay project part of the capital improvement, or was that?
Well, it is, Mr. Chair, but with the family service center, with that being, having income for the rent, we like to see their capital improvement costs come out of their budget. So yes, it is a capital improvement cost, but that comes from the family service center budget versus the capital improvement fund. Because I guess you could call it somewhat of an enterprise fund, since it does rely on the revenue and, and costs. And I guess a few years ago, we decided to try to, remember when we had the elevator project? That was a $300,000 cost, and frankly, but the revenues of the family service center really covered all of that, and that was a capital improvement.
When we did the roof and we did the windows, that came, that didn't come out of the roof.
That didn't come out of there, because they weren't, their bond wasn't paid off at that time, so they were still costing us some dollars every year. But now, they've been pretty, they've been pretty neutral. So that's a real positive thing.
That's pretty much it for the family service center. Any questions?
What was the other pages besides twenty-two?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four?
Seventy-three, seventy-four.
Actually, I believe Georgia started on page seventy-four was the family service center budget, and Joe will be starting on twenty-two.
Okay. You did?
Aye.
Okay.
As far as my, the courthouse budget here, it's, we don't have any major changes this year, it's, the budget's pretty much staying the same. We did increase the lawn and the snow line item just slightly, not a major increase, just simply because of the added trade that we have going on. Our employee salaries, it looks like we're overall down, but like Georgia had mentioned, we did that adjustment of who's actually working where and who's getting billed to where. So, so overall, that's down, but Georgia's is up, so it's kind of offset somewhat. Other than that, I don't have any major changes. I know it's kind of a transition year, when we add the two new facilities next year, so I'm, we're, it's kind of our goal to track that. We, as far as letting, having one inefficient building go away and two efficient ones come up, trying to see, I don't anticipate huge spikes of, with our gas and our utility and everything, so that's going to be our goal in this next year to track all that, so. But other than that, no, no major changes in the courthouse jail budget. I know we're, we're planning on adding next year some extra lines that will break down each building a little bit better, so we can, so we can track that a little bit better, so. Other than that, not much here.
Brian, the, the, in the new request for corrections, does that cover what they wanted to have with their own onsite maintenance person?
No, it does not, Mr. Chair.
So that's not in there, and it's not in yours yet?
No, and I, I think we've had some discussion on that, and currently, right now, I have five full-timers and then a nighttime guy, and we, we work as a crew, and I think our tactic was to see how it all shakes out. We have new buildings going up, and are they going to require, you know, how much more work are they going to be? They might be less work, and I thought I would take this year and see what my crew can handle. I don't, right now, I don't feel like we're extremely short with.
I know, I know, they were pretty persistent.
Yeah, they really, and I, and I think that's conversations we'll have with, with Julian and jail staff, that I think with our, whatever responsibilities we have to meet their needs is, we'll make sure that happens within our crew, so.
Because those doors open next year.
Yes, they do, yep. And, and we, the way we do it is, you know, we have on-call, everybody has to know the jail and the LEC and stuff, and so it's tough to have one dedicated person to that, you know, maintenance facility when, you know, everybody's on-call and needs to know everything. So, so, you know, my tactic is to, to see what we need for this year, and then if we struggle next year, then we'll put it, but it's not one of them where I think we fall off the map, and we absolutely need somebody right this second. We can slowly watch this and see how it goes, so.
And Mr. Chair, that philosophy kind of applies to IT has had that same concern. You know, sometimes the social services wants a dedicated person, law enforcement wants a dedicated person, and then when that person is sick or gone on vacation, then who fills in? So it's the same philosophy. Joe feels he has a crew that he wants adapted to all buildings so that they can respond to it all, so. And they've, they've done so much work on this project, he just feels, and give Joe a lot of credit, he feels that they can, they can handle two new buildings because there shouldn't be a lot of.
Well, I like your approach, that's your thing.
Yeah, yeah, I think we definitely don't need anybody at this point, I believe, so.
Okay.
I'm not worried about it at all, so.
Do we supply the maintenance for the jail then, or do they clean up, do they clean the jail themselves?
Well, we kind of, between Georgia and, Georgia's crew and my crew, we, we, Georgia does the cleaning part of it, obviously, and then there's a whole set of stuff we need to do maintenance-wise that we, we do.
But there, there's some day-to-day stuff that goes on in the jail with the jail staff.
Yeah, oh yeah, they definitely clean a lot.
They clean within the cell area.
Yeah.
We clean the common and the public areas.
But the cells are, they have, right?
Yeah, yeah. There's quite a bit that they, that they do, so.
You guys would be called over there an awful lot to be able to clean up every little mess.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
Just have a comment. The grounds look great. I, it's, and I know I've told you this, but I just, I really appreciate the jumble that it has been, and you've, you know, addressed it really well. It looks really nice, so good job.
Thank you. Well, this budget is just a breeze.
See, Mr. Chair, I, I think it's worthy, too, to note, and, and Georgia's done a terrific job, but, but again, Joe is showing his, his team spirit, and frankly, the law enforcement center and the new correctional facility both have allowances in them around $30,000 for landscaping, and, but that did not include the sprinkler system. And Joe is saying, hey, we can, we can follow the design, put the sprinkler system in, and we'll plant the trees, his staff will plant the trees and plant the bushes and, and do the rock work, and, and that's going to save us a lot of money.
Yep.
So hats off to jail.
Very good. All right, next. Kevin. Budget presentation, so soil and water conservation. With us, Kevin Kastenberg, district manager. Good morning, Kevin.
Talking tree planting with those individuals, that's right up our alley, because we usually plant about twenty thousand every year.
Yes.
So.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, whenever you're ready, Kevin.
Okay. Our present twenty-eighteen annual budget reflects a two percent cost of living adjustment, and talking with Brian past, I guess it was actually yesterday, the actual, we tried and stay in line with what the county does for their employees, we've done that for a number of years, and for some reason, either I didn't hear right or whatever, but the county is getting two and a half percent for their employees, I figured in two percent. So that's something, I guess, I, I'm not sure how you guys would want to view that, but I've looked at a point five percent addition, which would be about seventeen-hundred-and-fifty dollars, if that's something that my board, I guess, I'd have to bring it to them also. But that's something, I guess, I'd like to bring to your attention. We have been trying over the years to stay in line with the county office, so for whatever reason, I must have heard wrong talking to Darren, but anyway, you know, our, our mission statement primarily is to promote natural resources, stewardship through technical, educational, and financial assistance. And I wanted to write that down, so I, so I didn't misspeak, because this is something that we work with all landlords in the county, not just farmers, because I think a lot of people think that we mostly work with farmers, but we were trying to expand our operation to have urban conservation. And some of that increases that you see in our, in our budget reflects some promotion items, some of the bigger dollar items. That is a new position that we created in the last couple of years in urban conservation. We're working with the river keepers across the river in Fargo, and also the Cass County office. We hope to expand that into other cities in Clay County as well, so that's something we're working with. Um, through the years, in addition to our normal conservation work, typically, the state has programs and that type of thing, and we are, you know, we work with, with a lot of state programs. The county has, has brought forward, and we've accepted the responsibilities for county local water management planning, Wetland Conservation Act, and I know Commissioner Haney sat in our last board meeting and saw how the process with some of the Wetland Conservation Act potential impacts can, I guess, delay a, a building development that we're working with. I think we'll get through that, but it's just a certain process to go through that state requires us, and Lynn from our office works mostly with those type of issues. The county feedlot officer program is something that was transferred to us a few years ago. Then also, just the, probably the most recent one was the county egg inspector program. And last year, we hired a new individual full-time, Gabe Foltz, who has taken on that role. We all work with the program as, as an office staff, but Gabe is, Gabe Foltz is the one who, who will kind of lead the landowners and complaints, that type of thing to, to him. So I'm not sure if you guys have even met him, I should bring him sometime, so you all can get, I know Commissioner Mojo and, and Commissioner Haney have met him, but just to let you guys know who he is. So our, our anticipated workload is, is on the increase, and I guess the newest venture and Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Mojo both have been big players in this buffer law, and that's something that we are working through with the county accepting the responsibility for the enforcement of the wetlands, streams, and rivers in the county, but also with the Wild Rice Watershed District not taking the, the responsibility for the enforcement between their waters, we're sending letters and contacting landlords in those Watershed District public ditching, and also need buffers by, actually by November one of 2018. So that's a process that we're working with. We had a meeting last, last month, we'll be having one in August again to work out some more details, but all is, all is, is increased our workload immensely. Last year, this was something that was kind of a unique venture for us also, that the state had an opportunity for us that was offered to all eighty-nine SWCDs in the state. It was a, something called a district capacity initiative, where they created a fund of a hundred thousand dollars to each district, basically was to try to increase our office staff, our capacity. We used those funds to hire our new person, Gabe. And if you recall, last year, the, another unique opportunity, if the county was willing to go over and above at, at the level for Clay County with eighteen thousand dollars, the state was willing to come in and match that as well. That opportunity is, is existing again this year, and I've been, next year, I will have been working with the, with the SWCD for forty years, and these are things that I've never seen before, these opportunities where the county can be matched by the state. So you, very unique things that, something I, I guess, will be working with you folks. And also, if it's possible, I would like to work with Brian again. He and I and Dave Overgo sat down last year, took the additional increase that you guys felt was worthy, and worked that into our county egg inspector program, and also working with Dave and his engineering staff to give us some, offer to us some engineering assistance. So, so the additional, over and above what our normal request was, the additional to bring that level up to that, that eighteen thousand dollars was a little over eleven thousand dollars. I guess by you playing ball with us, the state coming in and matching that, we were able to bring that back into the county through, to helping the egg inspector program and some assistance from Dave. Excuse me. I guess, we are also in the, with, by adding a new person and some changes going on with our relationship with the USDA NRCS office, we're going to be seeing some changes in our, in our building. And, you know, we're going to be seeing some things in-house, I guess I hesitate to use some, use the word, we're going to be seeing some things in the outhouse also, but we're going to be looking at expanding our office to the south where we presently are located, and that all is supposed to be taking place fairly soon, so our, our hopes that to be in there before the snow flies, we have hoped to get some, some work started by, right after the Fourth of July. Nothing has been done yet. We met with an individual yesterday with some wiring issues that we're going to be needing, and we're going to be basically separating ties with, with our USDA partner, basically by putting a wall, it's going to be in between us and their office, something we've been in, in business for seventy-two years, and this is the first time this is, has occurred. So something will be changing in the very near future, so I guess I, I always appreciate the, the opportunity to come talk to you, because usually I come in here and it's budget time, and I, I like some of the, recently, we've come in and not talking budget, but just programs that we work together on, so. Any questions, anybody?
What's the impetus behind this wall?
I think a lot of it comes down to, a few years ago, the government shutdown, and USDA, our, the FSA office, which is half of our building, and our office is co-located on the same roof with the NRCS, the federal employees, and we're in an open, open space concept. Well, when the, the office, when the government shut down, the office was closed to the public. The NRCS staff were not allowed to come to work. Well, we're not NRCS, our doors were open, landowners still coming in the office, you know, they were closed for two and a half weeks, if I recall, and we were still operating business as usual. Our customers would come in, we would take, we would, we would try to serve them as best we could, or take names, you know, so-and-so contacted us, or we're looking for you. But I think a lot of the driving forces, their office was open, but no staff was there. And the whole thing about that is, is, like I say, there's a lot of things that, and they don't tell us a whole lot, but that's kind of what I think is, is a lot of the driving forces. Their, like I say, their staff wasn't in, and we were, we were, we were allowed to be open, and, like I say, that, there's, there's, there's a lot of changes. The new leasing, new leases, when a building is up for renewing their leases, if you presently have your own lease, which we do with, with the building owner, NRCS has their own lease with the building owner, we've worked that out over the years, this, this, there's changes coming. So that, that I think is the number one issue right there, is the security reasons.
You said, you work with river keepers.
Yep.
And I see they, they also have a budget here, I think, do. What do you do with river keepers? Do you supply money, supply work, or what?
We have, no, there's a water festival that they have every year for area fourth graders that's held at the YMCOM Center. We used to, through our water plan, we used to offer some funding to, to individuals to help them put that on. Back in two thousand three or two thousand four, the state went through an un allotment period, and a lot of those funds that were directed for our local water management plan were cut way down, and those, those funds have not come back. So we basically, rather than provide assistance financially, we provide our in, I guess, in-kind help. So we actually have a person that will work at the, at the, it's a week-long water festival that we will man, I shouldn't say man, staff a booth, and we'll have presentations related to conservation efforts. We also, just this past year, with our new employee, our district coordinator, Amanda Lewis, we created a urban conservation program. So working with the Cass County, it's our conservation district, river keepers, and us, we put on some workshops for, for very individuals, they sign up through the community education pamphlets and register online, and we have held three, well, actually, there's been six different workshops that we've held for landowners. One, one, I guess, three different ones, one's in the west part, the one's in Fargo, one's in Morehead, we put on rain barrel workshops, and then we put on these compost tumblers, we put those onto, the, the hope is to expand it to, if all of Clay County, you know, put on something in the town. We, we had had, if you were at the Clay County Fair, we had an example of our rain barrels sitting by our booth there, and had a, a number of individuals come that were passing by wondering what, what that was that was being distributed or demonstrated, I guess, so. So we sell those actually to landlords, we have a cost share program that we'll help pay for, for part of the cost for the compost tumblers and the rain barrels.
So am I reading this right, then, is the, the total requested increase that you have right now, and you were basing it on two percent cost of living rather than two point five, is four thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars? That's what you're looking for addition to last year?
Right. If I did a little quick figure, I get two and a half percent, the figure would go from, from thirty, forty-three ninety-five to sixty-one four. from thirty, forty-three ninety-five to sixty-one forty-four, so seventeen hundred and fifty dollar increase, that half a percent increase, so. Like I say, that's, that's my fault for, for getting that wrong, I, I guess that's my fault. And like I said, the opportunity exists for this additional eighteen thousand dollars. Not every county played ball with their SWCDs last year, and that's something I want to thank you, you for, for playing ball with us. We'll, we'll see where that goes again, working with, with Brian and whether Dave's involved this year, I guess that's yet to be seen, but we don't really have a game plan as of that, just came out here just in, in the last week or so, that the opportunity existed again. So if there's something that we can work out, I guess, put, put our, ours and your thinking caps, see if we can come up with something that we can partner on, because it's something, like I say, has been a, kind of a unique opportunity that was offered last year, I didn't think we'd see it again, but it is being offered again, so if there's something we can move with, Brian, I think I would appreciate that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just, just an observation for all of the commissioners, if you'll see on the front page, he has a total estimated expense of a little over five hundred thousand, and then the second page, um, the, um, requested county levy dollars is around two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty-four, something like that, so it's a, a little less than half, they are requesting levy dollars. And just for the commissioners that, that probably don't remember this, that the Soil and Water does not have the authority to levy, they have to, they come through the county board for the levy dollars, so that's about one percent roughly, a little less than one percent of your levy that is going towards Soil and Water.
We have an elected, we have an elected board, you know, the Watershed District's levy, um, funding with, with appointed managers, and we've got elected officials and don't have that ability. That's something that is, our, our association has tried for years to get, you know, potential that, that levy authority, it hasn't happened yet, and I don't know if it ever will, but that's something that, you know, that they feel elected officials, there should be, you know, maybe, maybe some rationale for offering levy authority, and that, like I say, that is brought up every year in our state convention, it hasn't passed in over the years, I've been there, so whether it ever happens, but, but I thank you for bringing that up, Brian.
Well, the, uh, the watershed itself doesn't levy, they have to come to the county board for approval for their levy.
I know it's on our property taxes, some of that.
Yeah, but it's, it's stated as watershed, but it still has to have the approval of the county board, you know, so it's, that I would just, but a lot of your funding comes through Ballzer.
A lot of it comes from Ballzer, yeah. I mean, there's a lot of, so many programs that we've got that are, you know, there's, they, they have our, our state cost share program, where we can cost share with landowners for the country, a windbreak program, erosion control programs, those type of things. Ballzer basically is, is kind of our oversight agency, because any, any grant funds that we receive from them, we need to report back to them as far as how those funds were used. And I guess we also do the, the local water management, which is part of the natural resources block grant, the planning and zoning offices, the shoreline regulations that we submit the request for them, and also the, the subsurface sewage treatments, systems that the health department, we also submit the grant application on behalf of them to the state, and they let us know what they did with those funds, and we report to the state how they used those funds, and we do reporting for, for both planning and zoning and the health department for that, or environmental services for those two programs.
So Kevin, the, certainly the county feedlot officer, um, program has, in my opinion, has been a, a good success compared to the controversies from years ago, before we entered into them. And how, how do you feel the ag inspector issue is going?
I think it's going, I mean, we got, we have, the funding, I, I appreciate you guys, because I think when we started, we had about ten thousand dollars that we had to work with as far as the budget, and it's increased now to, it's right around twenty-five thousand dollars, and we have additional five thousand that we put into it from that, this grant that we had last year. We still get calls, and that's just, that's just the nature of the, of the game, we don't have enough funds to cover the whole county, we kind of go through a process in the spring with our, our, the consultant or the vendor who we hired is a, is a person out of, by Yulin, his spraying company does a lot of different counties. And we also meet with Dave Overbow and his staff, Eric Hovey, and we kind of set down a game plan every year for which, which roads do we want to highlight, and a lot of them are the same, same ones, because there's just recurring weeds that are popping up. And we're seeing some, some different weeds that, you know, when I started, never even heard of something called wild parsnip, there was common tansy spotted napply, things that, you know, but I didn't even know what they were, but definitely you start to know and recognize them as you drive around the county. And those are, I, I, what I see are things that, you drive to other parts of the, I go to Vector County, and this wild parsnip is running wild over there, and our county ag inspector, Gabe Foltz, who just took the job over, uh, just this, this last year, he was at a three-day conference down in Owatonna, and this wild parsnip was just, it's all over. So we're doing our best to keep it out of, out of the, primarily, the, what we're seeing is long highway ten, and I think a lot of it comes from gravel being moved from east to west. So we're trying to get on top of that, a lot of those roads are, are the, you know, Minnesota Department of Transportation's responsibility, so we'll contact them to let them know that things are, we see a spot, a hotspot here. But we went with some of this extra funding that we got last year, we took a portion of that, purchased a UTV with a, I guess, a little, um, a little, like a box on the back, and, and a spraying unit. So we're trying to hit some of these spots that, that we're doing in addition to what we've got the, the, our vendor hired to do, and a lot of these spots, as we're driving by, the, the county, if we can hit some areas that are just small little spots, if we can catch them early, try to get rid of them, you know, before they get to be a big problem. But actually, there, there's lots of stuff out there, it's a job that will never get done, will never get rid of, but it's just, like I say, there's just different things popping up.
Well, even this year, the thistle is worse than I've, I've ever seen, I mean, the ditches are full of it right now.
I know, you know, and we appreciate.
Now it's all going to seeds, you know.
Right, you know, and, and stuff like that, we need to be, if we're not hitting those right away, if the landowners will let us know, and, and most of them don't have a problem giving us a call that you've got a problem out there, and we'll go out there and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll try to get on that right away if we, if we can. Some of that stuff, like you say, if it's to seed already, you know, it, it probably needs to be mowed, damage is kind of done when the, when the seed is ready to start flying. But if we go out there and mow that, you know, that's, that's when those things want to start shooting new growth, if we can hit them then with, with some spray, that, that's a good time to get them. But yeah, you're right, the thistles, every year seems to be different, that one just seems to be love dry weather, some love wet weather, it's, every year's different.
Kevin, uh, thank you for your report this morning, and if you, if I could ask, if you could, um, maybe send an amended of this to, to adjust that eighteen hundred dollars on here? Um, and, you know, as we go through this process, we're, right now, we're listening to all departments' budget requests, and, um, once we get through them all, then we'll sit down and, and go through a process, and, and by September, you'll have a pretty good idea on, on, on your request, so.
I do just want to comment quickly, I know you did add that extra position, but Gabe really has been instrumental in all of the contacts for the buffer line, and I think out of your office, he really has had the most involvement in that. So clearly, it's been money well spent, I think, to hire him, because he does really know that's the big inside and out, and even when Commissioner Gross and I had met with you last month on the buffer implementation and how it'll go about that, I think he'll really be helpful going forward.
I, I think so too, like I say, it's fun to have somebody young in the office, you know, someone a little older, once they're, the, the computer world, even though it's something we are in daily, still things that just don't click real well with my, with my, my head, I guess, and he picks up and nests up real well, so definitely those are things that I see with the younger generation coming in, having lived that from day one, um, it's, it's a plus for us, so, and he, he really works well with the, with our office and with the landowners, like I say, he's just got a, like I say, it was, it was a good move on our part. It was something we needed to do, it was getting to the point where you get to be jacks of all trades and masters of none, you get, you get to know a lot about, you get to know a little about a lot, but you don't know a lot about anything. And that's where I find myself, is I know a lot of, you know, there's a lot of different programs, I know little bits and pieces of it, but I'm not good at anything in, in anymore, so I, it's just, it's kind of frustrating, but, um, it's the way the, the job has evolved.
Well, we've got some good partnerships with, uh, your, your board, and, you know, we appreciate that, and I think, uh, our ag producers in Clay County seem to have a good rapport with you, and.
I hope so.
Yeah, and so it's, it's good, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, guys.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right. Kirk Rosenberg, solid waste management.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You have a budget presentation, then you have a couple of item.
He must be looking for money, he's wearing a tie today.
Yeah, yep. No, I'll tell you what, after, honestly, this is not going to be, this would be kind of a strange story, but I had a dream last night, I was in this most, toughest place in the world, and I turn around and I guess who was there, Commissioner Gross. There was some meeting with some, something that was pertinent, pertinent to somebody quick.
What is it that we're having?
Uh, pass those around if you will, those are the, uh, new improved version of the budget.
How many pages do we, oh, oh, excuse me.
Yeah, you're, Mr. Chairman, your budget package is on page sixty-six, but we, Lori and I went through with Kirk here the other day on this, and there's quite a few major changes on it, so I asked him to print out a new one, so which he's done and provided for you to follow through today, and questions on, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, they really worked me over pretty tough, so. Uh, Mr. Chairman, he was really, really pretty good last year, we had a really good year last year, um, some of the highlights that, uh, just wanted to point out, we had two out county, or out of the metro area, collections that went really well, we had one in Barnesville, and we also had one in Holly, and they were very well received and very well attended. Uh, the other major things are, as you know, we're trying to build a new transfer station and Household Has Waste facility, and we got a construction drawings that are complete, uh, they're complete, we're ready to do some building. We also submitted a permit to the PCA for their review for the construction of that, and the, um, the draft permit has been submitted, we've got some comments back, there aren't been being anything significant, so we'll have our permit by, I hope by the first of September, so that's a pretty positive thing as well. And we also bought a bullmag, uh, we hadn't had a bullmag, the bullmag is, we talked about, is the major compactor out there, uh, we use it twenty-four seven, uh, it was a very, very spendy piece of equipment, six hundred thousand dollars, um, so it, it, it's been delivered and it's worked out well, and we're getting better compaction rates, so everybody's pretty happy with that. Uh, as far as what we want to try and accomplish next year, obviously, we're talking right now to Waste Management and Mincota about a public-private partnership for a single sort MRF, and hopefully, we're going to be able to get that done. Uh, we're trying to get those two to work together and, and try and make it happen. Uh, we were approached by Waste Management about building a, a public-private, uh, single sort MRF. Um, the single sort, uh, process that's been going on in Morehead has been very, very well received, I mean, it's just phenomenal. Uh, after two weeks, I talked to Steve Moore yesterday, who's the Public Works Director, uh, City of Morehead has collected twenty-five percent of the total amount that was collected last year in the first two weeks in Morehead, so it's, it's pretty phenomenal. Uh, I also talked to, um, Mincota folks yesterday, and, I mean, Mincota folks said that they, uh, they've been shipping down to the Twin Cities to have the material processed on a regular basis, but they still have twelve truckloads that are sitting on their dock waiting to be shipped. So it's, it's pretty significant. I think initially, the, the first couple of weeks, you're going to have a little surge because people have been saving up, and, uh, they're pretty excited about it, but I think that, uh, it, it's going to work out really well for the county and also the city, so. And that's something that we're working on, we're going to try and get that accomplished, I hope, uh, soon. Uh, the other major thing that we want to try and do this next year is, uh, the funding for the transfer station, Household Has Waste, uh, we have to go to legislature to, to get that done. Uh, we worked really, really hard last year to try and get that done, but, uh, the great separation that, uh, City of Morehead needed to get kind of bumped us out of, out of the line, so, uh, hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to get some money next year. Uh, I've talked to the chairman of both the, uh, the House and the Senate Committees for the capital investments, and they assured me that they're going to take a really good hard look at it next year, so I'm feeling fairly positive about that. Uh, as far as the budget itself, um, my budget is a little different than other budgets that you work with, uh, my budget is an enterprise fund, uh, it isn't, uh, it's, it's, while it's part of the county government, it's a separate budget, um, we, um, basically, we fund our own program, um, and it's funded primarily through two ways, uh, through tipping fee, and then the second way it's funded is through a service fee on all properties in the, in the county. Uh, we haven't raised any tipping fees here of late, what we did last year, as you remember, we moved from a volume base to a weight base, uh, because we got a scale. Uh, we were pretty close with the City of Morehead as far as, uh, what we thought they were going to be paying, um, out, outside the, uh, city, uh, it wasn't as close, so there was a, a little, um, some, some discon, uh, there was some concern, I guess you'd say, uh, from some of the smaller cities, um, but I think we, we've got that squared away and everybody's, uh, kind of used to what's going on right now, so. Um, as far as the, the major items or items that I was going to talk about, and if, obviously, if you have any questions, uh, you have the, the microphone. Uh, the first item I wanted to talk to you, you know, about was on the first page there. Um, one of the things that we had this year, we had a wind event, uh, we had just unbelievable wind out at the landfill, and it blew litter, um, probably about three or four sections away. So we had volunteers out there quite a bit, and, uh, one of the things that Chairman, uh, wanted to make sure is that we had a line item for, uh, the volunteer payment. Uh, we also use volunteers for our, um, um, collections at the Barnesville and also Holly, and also here. So there's a line item, and that's, uh, located, uh, it's called volunteer payments, it's sixty-two, uh, three ninety, sixty-one, uh, fourteen, um, so that's, uh, that's something I wanted to point out. We, uh, um, basically had several groups out there, four-H groups, um, church groups, scout groups, uh, all kinds of things. It was really, really pretty positive in, in the sense that people understood a little bit more about what we do, and particularly at the landfill, people are not really aware of just how complicated the landfill can be, and so it was really, really good from an educational point of view, and it also helped us out as well immensely. Um, the other item I wanted to point out here, um, is, uh, further on down there, it's sixty-two, uh, seventy-one, and it's called the professional services, and, uh, you'll see there, it's a three point five million dollars, and, uh, what that's going to be used for, what I budgeted for is for the single sort MRF. Um, I think that the, um, you know, we haven't had any negotiations as such right now, but I, I have a sense of kind of what our contribution will be or should be, and I certainly don't think it'll exceed that, so, uh, that's what I've budgeted in, in there. I don't know if you guys have any questions, if you.
That would be the, the triple partner, the, uh, public partnership with Waste Management you're talking about?
It could be Waste Management, it could be Waste Management, uh, Mr. Chairman, sorry, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, and Commissioner, it could be Waste Management, it could be, uh, Mincota alone, it could be either one of those alone, or it could be, uh, a combination of those two, is, which I hope it might be, or it could be a combination of Waste Management with another company or Mincota with another company, so that's, that's basically what that's for, yes, sir.
So tell us what that three point five million dollars is for.
Uh, well, as I said, we haven't, uh, really begun any kind of negotiations, uh, so without tipping my hand too much, uh, as far as what the county's position is, uh, it'd be primarily for, um, capital, uh, type of material, uh, such as land, uh, buildings, uh, things like that.
I have a question.
Ms. Mahler?
I have a question in regards to your salaries, so, um, both in the solid waste salaries, I've noticed that you've gone down about twenty thousand, but then on the existing landfill salaries proposed, it's about a hundred and twenty-five percent jump.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, uh, one of the things that we have there is we have another person that we hadn't had before, we have a truck driver, uh, that we hadn't had before, and, uh, the truck driver will basically be, um, taking the, the garbage from, uh, Morehead over to a perm to be processed, uh, that's their primary job, uh, they take two loads a day, uh, they also take leachate from, that's collected from the landfill, and, uh, they take that over to the, the Fargo treatment facility, so that's, that's the primary difference there.
But your budget for twenty-ten, or twenty-seventeen was two-ten, and then the proposed for twenty-eighteen is four-hundred and seventy-three?
There's a mistake in there, I, there's a bad formula, it should be two-out.
Oh, gotcha.
I mean, in the one line item.
All right.
Let's do some checking from out to...
Instead of the four seventy-three, it should be...
It should be, it should be two eleven in the top line, and then thirty-five thousand in thirteen.
Okay, thank you.
The audits are goofing me up, I can't believe it.
Huh?
Huh?
The audits are goofing me up, I can't believe it.
But I was doing a check-in, and then I forgot.
No, I was just, that's a, that's a pretty healthy truck-driving position.
No, no, that's, I probably should apply, I should, yeah, I was gonna apply for it, yeah.
Sorry.
Uh, the other, uh, item I was gonna point out here was, um, uh, on page five of this, uh, and it's under, um, s- it's, uh, sixty-two, three ninety-two, sixty-two seventy-one, again, it's other professional services. I've, uh, budgeted eight hundred thousand dollars there, uh, we may or may not use that. Uh, essentially, what that, uh, number is for is, uh, we may have to do some additional cell construction out there, uh, at the landfill. Um, the, uh, running a landfill is very, very expensive, uh, very, very expensive, and, um, I mean, there's all kinds of things, and, and we'll talk about some more things here that's, uh, later on, uh, but there's regulatory requirements, um, you know, there's, there's all kinds of issues that, uh, uh, need to be done at the landfill, and, uh, it does cost money, so. Uh, again, what, uh, that, uh, budget number is for is the possibility we may or may not have to do some, uh, cell work out there. Uh, it really depends on where we're at, um, when we do the flyover, um, to check the, uh, the, um, capacity that we currently have, uh, this spring, and we'll be doing that this spring. Um, the, uh, next thing I'd like to talk about is on, uh, page six, um, and, uh, that's, uh, sixty-two, three ninety-two, sixty-six oh five, and it's machinery and automotive equipment, and, uh, there's a number there, two hundred thousand dollars. One of the things I did last year, uh, 'cause this is something that's really pretty important and pretty near and dear to my heart, is, uh, uh, basically, this capital replacement. So the, uh, the idea is, is that, uh, if we do need to make, uh, uh, buy a mo- a boom, boom egg, for example, or buy expensive pieces of equipment, or do expensive work out there, we're gonna have money set aside. Uh, it's, uh, similar to, um, the Internal Service Fund that the, uh, uh, the other departments have. Uh, this is something that we, uh, we just started, I think it's really important, again, because it really, uh, helps alleviate the, uh, the hills and the valleys that are associated with, uh, setting the tipping fee.
What, what do you, you, what did you use for your criteria to set that at two hundred thousand?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, what I did last year is essentially, I went through and I looked at all the, uh, all the, all the equipment and all the major, uh, capital, um, repairs or, or, uh, needs. Uh, I, I looked at the, uh, the number of years that, uh, I estimated that they'd last, uh, and then I, I basically, I, I, I put a little, uh, inflation, I think it was like two percent inflation, and then I also had a, a replacement, uh, value at the end of the, uh, the time, and that's what I used, uh, for the, the, each, each item, and then I added all those items up, and then I, I, uh, came up with a number. This number, I feel, is a little light, but it's, it's a really, really good start.
Are you suggesting that, that, uh, obviously, you're suggesting then that, that we start an internal service fund for solid waste?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I think that, yeah, I think that would be a pretty positive idea.
So, um, in doing that, um, we should be following the same, uh, protocol and procedures that, uh, Lori used in all the other areas, right?
Right, I've got a list, I'm looking at it right now, a list of everything that we put...
So, so you've been involved with that?
Yeah, an estimated life, I need to, uh...
Okay. And so, so based on what we do with all other, um, items throughout the county that we have on that, you're following the same process?
Right, yeah.
Very good, okay.
Okay, uh, the next item I wanted to point out was a little further down there, it's, uh, sixty-eight twenty, called, uh, miscellaneous, uh, miscellaneous, uh, Minnesota Landfill Surcharge, PLMSW, uh, A or whatever. Uh, what that is, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, maybe you, we'd like to speak to this a little bit more. Uh, one of the things that we've done with Prairie Lakes is we've, uh, done a monthly payment, uh, for, um, our contribution to, uh, the Prairie Lakes, uh, facility, and, uh, it's, it's about twenty-nine thousand dollars a month, and, uh, when you take it times twelve, it's three hundred forty-five, forty-eight thousand dollars on an annual basis. Um, essentially, what it is, is that, uh, uh, the Prairie Lakes, uh, folks, uh, set a budget. We, uh, own, we own, uh, Clay County, when I say we, Clay County owns, uh, fifteen percent of that, so essentially, uh, the contribution, uh, for us, uh, to help, uh, in that budget is, um, is the three hundred forty-eight thousand.
Well, we're paying based on the tons, too, that we...
The tons, right.
'Cause we're, we're maxed out.
Right, and, and, Mr. Chairman, one thing I should point out is, is that we, uh, we, uh, uh, when we, we got involved with Prairie Lakes, we, um, are obligated to take ninety-four hundred tons over there, but the first, the first six thousand tons are, are, uh, free. Uh, we don't have to pay anything except transportation, so, uh, that's also reflected in this as well.
So the thirty-four hundred tons times the, basically, the tipping fee rate is how we get to that three hundred forty-eight thousand?
That's right, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so, so I'm just curious, why, why, uh, okay, we did have, uh, we did have, how come in seventeen we only had a budget of two hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand?
Mr. Chairman, I think one of the reasons is, is that we, uh, we hadn't really started this, uh, whole process beforehand.
Yeah, but we still knew what we had to pay, though.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think part of it was, is that we hadn't, we hadn't, uh...
We were paying on, based on delivery and not on the guaranteed.
Exactly, and I think that that was one of the problems that we had, is, is that we hadn't delivered quite as much as what, um...
We were supposed to.
Yeah, exactly.
Obligated.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, alright, I just wanted to know the reasons behind it, though.
Um, any other questions? Alright.
So, can I have one more question?
Oh, sure, yeah, Jim, go ahead.
Um, do you anticipate any permitting problems with this, uh, public partnership with, uh, with, uh, Waste Management?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, uh, I don't anticipate anybody, uh, any problems, but, uh, you know, at, at the same time, I'm a planner, and Jenny and I were just talking about this yesterday, uh, you, you expect the, uh, the worst, uh, and you hope for the best, so you, you plan for the worst, but you, you hope for the best. Uh, I really don't anticipate, uh, you know, the, uh, the, the MRF itself, it should not be, uh, a major issue, uh, because it's really not that intrusive at all. A landfill, it's gonna be a little bit more, uh, difficult to get a, a permit. Uh, Waste Energy Facility be very, very difficult to get a, a permit, but, uh, uh, MRF, I don't anticipate any issues.
And you're looking at a clean MRF?
A clean MRF, Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioner, at this time, a clean MRF, yes.
Alright.
Kirk, the, uh, sixty-nine fifty-three depreciation, what are, what are we depreciating?
I'm gonna defer to you.
Excuse me, or what are, it's, it's all the assets that they have out there, so now we got a building as well, and so, we're, you know, any of the motor graders...
So...
Any of the equipment that's out there.
So if we're starting an internal service fund, would that change that?
No.
Because, because that, it, it's money we're taking out of cash revenue, it must, so it's going someplace.
And it's appreciated, and that's just a, a journal entry, it's, it's really not cash that we're...
But it, but it's being subtracted as an expense, so, so from dollars, it's, it's being subtracted from the revenues. So it must be going somewhere in a bank account or something, I mean...
Well, what happens, you know, when, when you buy your asset, you need to increase cash and you increase the asset, and the expense, you expense it, and it's, uh, increasing the expense and, and then, um, putting it in accumulated depreciation. So it's kind of two different things, and when you're putting it on the financial statements, you have to show the depreciation, but whereas, you know, when we're planning for earning money, then we're... Does that make sense, no?
No. It, it, it's still, to me, to me, it's still is when we're, when we're trying to establish a net dollar amount that we need to, uh, use, get revenue for...
If, if I was with that spreadsheet and trying to determine fees that we need, I would include one or the other. I would probably include depreciation and not the plan for the future purchase of, of equipment, that's what I would use.
'Cause in essence, that's what that is.
Yes.
So it's... Kind of, I'm looking, I see this kind of a doubling up here.
Yes, it is.
It is, yeah, it is.
It is.
Huh?
It is. We always, we always have long discussions about that.
But, but, you know, and I'm, I'm, I'm about the money.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, so we'll, we'll, we'll talk more about that.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we had, we did have a discussion about that, actually.
Yeah, and I, I, I do, uh, I do wanna make a comment that, um, uh, I, I, I would, I would never support, uh, three point five million dollars cash coming out of your account in one year for a capital improvement. Uh, that's not, not to say that I don't support the project, but to, to say we're gonna generate revenue all in one year to pay for three point five million, um...
And we don't do that.
Yeah, but, but, again...
In landfill, it's, the expenses are like this.
Right.
But the revenue is different.
Yeah.
And so it's definitely like that.
Yeah, so, so this, this would just reduce, um...
It reduces, yeah, or, and funds.
Yeah, fund that, same. Very good.
Alright, one other thing I just wanted to point out here, I'm sorry, I just...
On the budget, okay.
On the budget, uh, under sixty-nine, uh, uh, I guess it's fifty, sixty-nine fifty, under, uh, um, on that, uh, page six, uh, it's inter-fund transfers, uh, we, uh, are one of the few, uh, few departments that actually, uh, pay, uh, a, uh, fee into the, uh, the administration, so I just wanted to point that out.
And I just wanna point out that you're one of the few, uh, enterprise funds.
Exactly, that's, that's the one I was short of, it's, uh...
We, we, we appreciate the fact that you're making that payment, but you should be.
And I appreciate that you appreciate that, I do.
Has that host fee for Holly Township been working fine?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, so far, yes, it has been. I mean, I, I think it was a really, uh, positive thing that you all came up with, and, uh, you know, I think that, uh, they, they, they've used it, you know, in an appropriate manner, so that's some, that's something that's also, that's worked out very, very well, I think. Uh, the other thing, and, uh, you know, I don't wanna digress too much, 'cause I know you all busy, even though they gave me a half hour, they said I liked it, uh... Um, we also, uh, give, uh, a stipend to the townships if they, uh, um, have a, um, site for a recycling facility, and that's five hundred dollars, uh, a year, so, that's, uh, that's all something, uh, that we, you know, try and encourage people. Would you like to move on to the, uh, the next item, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I, I have one question.
Okay.
Uh, I was at one of our local, uh, fueling stations in North Moorhead, and I noticed that those, uh, recycling bottles are gone.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, yeah, there's been some confusion on that. Essentially, uh, uh, as I understand, uh, there's a, um, problem between, um, the RAM, which is the Recycling Alliance, uh, or Recyc- Recycling Association of Minnesota, and, uh, the program up here that, uh, actually runs it. And so, uh, yeah, there's been some confusion about that, so I, I've asked about it, and, uh, and we're trying to, trying to deal with it. I, I assume you're talking about the holiday, uh, fund?
I wasn't gonna name names right now.
Sorry. Sorry, so, yeah, we, we, uh, we're aware of that, and we're, we're trying to, trying to, uh, chase that down, and, uh, try and get a, get a grip on that.
Alright.
Uh, the other thing that I should mention really, really quickly, that I'm, I'm pretty excited about, we were out at the fair, and, uh, we, uh, we have a landfill model, uh, now, that's, uh, uh, really, really, uh, illustrative of, uh, what a, a landfill really looks like, and, uh, it was really, really a positive thing for, uh, each key and folks as they came up, so, um, I'm sure you get a chance to see it here. I know, uh, Commissioner Wayland and, uh, Commissioner Campbell at the, uh, SWAC meeting, we'll get to see it on Thursday, so...
I'm glad that you brought that up, because County Government Day at the fair really consisted of, uh, a small amount of departments, and you, your department really, uh, carried the load for that, that day, so, thanks for representing Clay County, and I think they had good educational programs. I noticed there was a pretty good, uh, flow of people coming in and out of the tents, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, we, uh, we, uh, find it a pretty good event to get out and meet some people, and I like fairs, too, so...
Okay, uh, let's move into your other two items here, uh, you have, you wanna establish a rate for the asbestos disposal?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, essentially, as, uh, I mentioned before, we moved from, uh, volume-based to weight-based, and, uh, when we did that, uh, we had only, um, established a, uh, a rate for, uh, friable asbestos. Friable asbestos is, uh, nasty, nasty stuff, it has to be triple-bagged and handled specially, uh, specially. And, uh, we did not, uh, establish a rate for the, uh, non-friable, and so that's what we, uh, would like to do today, because, uh, there's a, um, a facility that, uh, has, uh, quite a bit of, uh, non-friable, and it's mixed with, uh, quite a bit of, uh, soil, and, uh, so we'd like to, uh, establish the rate at, uh, sixty dollars a ton.
Sixty?
Sixty. It's the same rate as...
How do you, how do you determine that?
Whether it's friable, Mr. Chairman, or non-friable.
Yeah.
Essentially, the, uh, the, uh, contractor has to determine, or they have to, uh, acknowledge whether or not it's friable or not.
But how did you, how did you come up with the sixty dollar a ton?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, the way we came up with the, uh, sixty dollars is, uh, a ton, is we, we essentially, we took, uh, what we, uh, had as far as the non-friable, and tried to, uh, transfer the, uh, the cost, uh, uh, to a, uh, friable, or a non-friable, um, uh, rate. So it's, it's basically, uh, turning the, uh, if it makes sense, we're trying to take the, uh, friable rate and, uh, make it more appropriate to a non-friable rate, is what we're trying to do.
Make a motion to approve the tipping fee for the friable rate, non-friable, sorry.
You have a motion, second, and a second. Any further discussion?
I just have a question, would you define for the folks at home what the word friable asbestos is?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, uh, friable, essentially, what friable means is it's really powdery, and, uh, you know, it's, uh, easily inhaled, and, uh, it can cause, uh, really significant lung, uh, issues. Non-friable, uh, means it's not, uh, you know, really, really a powdery type, uh, inhalable type, uh, form.
Or in a, in a sheet, like, uh, um, a wall panel or something?
Could be a wall panel, could be linoleum, it could be all kinds of things, yes.
Well, the reason I ask about how you establish the rate is I, you know, I, I get concerned when we, when we start charging some things, because, uh, if, if it gets too expensive, some people might look for alternative, uh, solutions, meaning there are ditches and, and, uh, things like that for that type of stuff, so I, I ju- I just always...
Mr. Chairman, I agree, I think...
...with caution, that's why, that's why we actually do some funding of the electronics and stuff that...
Well, that's a, you know, Mr. Chairman, I think that's a, that's a really, really excellent point, uh, one of the things, and I just had a long discussion with a farmer, uh, last Tuesday, uh, at the electronics. Uh, right now, the, uh, county does not charge anything from electronics, and yet, he's, uh, saying that, uh, you know, every year, he has to go out and clean his ditch, uh, people go out and, and, uh, dump, uh, electronics, and it just doesn't make any sense at all, but I, 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 I share your concern. We, uh, we wanna make sure that the, uh, price is reasonable, and, uh, it, it covers our costs.
Well, that's the main, that's the thing we need to do, is cover our costs.
Yeah, so...
Very good, um, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none all in favor, signify, a saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Alright, I want to request, uh, approval of a consultant agreement with, for air quality permit.
Yes, uh, our landfill's gotten to be the size now where we need an air quality permit, uh, for, uh, it's primarily for greenhouse gases. Um, and it's, uh, tier one, tier two, uh, not to confuse you all too much, but tier one essentially, uh, uses, uh, uh, default numbers, so, um, we, uh, we have to go through the, uh, the dance and, uh, have the default numbers, and, uh, if, uh, the default numbers, uh, seem to indicate that we need to do a, uh, a tier two, then we need to do a tier two and actually do a measurement. Uh, we, uh, went out for, uh, two bids, uh, we got a bid from, uh, Wink, and we got a bid from, uh, Burns McDonald, um, both good firms. Uh, I'm, uh, recommending that, uh, we go with, uh, Wink, uh, because of, uh, their history and, uh, familiarity with the, uh, the landfill. And, uh, that amount should not be more than twenty-five thousand dollars. But again, uh, as we talked about earlier, Commissioner Heaney, uh, said another one of those regulatory things, that, uh, these landfills cost money, and, uh, it's, it's unbelievable.
I'm gonna go approve.
Second.
Most in the second, any further discussion?
Is that all part of the budget, though, I mean, it's gonna be...
Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, for this year's, uh, budget, and, um, yes, it was...
So we'll need twenty-five for next year again?
No, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gross, it's a one-time, uh, deal.
But, but, isn't it, isn't it...
It's for five years, the, uh, Mr. Chairman, it's for a five year, so we won't have to worry about it for, uh, five more years.
Alright, one in favor, signify, a saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Thank you, Kirk.
Thank you, you guys were, uh, tough on me, but it wasn't as bad as I thought it was gonna be, so, thank you.
Would you like to stay longer?
Uh, no, but that's alright, thank you much.
Off comes the code.
Alright, this time, we are scheduled for a break, so we will...
Forward ahead?
We will, uh, take that break now.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, we will, uh, reconvene our meeting here, and, uh, at this time, we're a little bit ahead of schedule on some things, so we are going to, at this time, take the agenda addition, uh, from our, uh, county administrator, Brian, do you wanna... Tim, we'll, we'll do yours at ten-ten. Tim, we'll do yours at ten-ten. Thank you. All right, Brian.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. What you have before you is a requested change order, and it says requested for guaranteed maximum price change. And this is something that we have, your two commissioners that are on the building committee, and myself and others have had discussions with for some time, and what you have before you is a change order that is adding and accrediting some of the changes that we have talked about. If you notice on the backside, there's quite a few changes, because any building project, you have some credits and you have some more expenses, but where the issue was, was in the contingency. You had approved a construction contingency within the guaranteed maximum price, and we just felt that until that contingency is utilized, that we should not be changing the guaranteed maximum price. And construction engineers has agreed with that, so what you'll see, now, these are the two projects that are combined together, and you'll see up on top of the back page, if you flip it over, that your guaranteed maximum price with the two projects was forty-two million, eight-hundred-twenty-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. And you'll notice that the total revised guaranteed maximum price is the same amount, so you're not approving any additional dollars that you haven't approved already. But what you are doing is you're approving the numerous changes that we have talked about and talked about and talked about in committee, and they've been brought to this committee a couple, or the board, a couple different times.
And they're being put under contract or contingency?
That's exactly right, yes. So there isn't a change in the guaranteed maximum price, but there is a change in the line where they're being charged to. And we promise to bring back those changes to you folks on a regular basis, and it's taken, I won't say it's taken this long, there's a long process to some of these costs, and it's taken this long to get you this change order.
For the sake of full disclosure here, do you want to talk about that, the language too, that it talks about and says in the event that the contract, do you want to explain that so that there's no surprises down the road?
Right, yeah, I think that's real fair, because that was one of the-
In fairness to the-
In fairness, yeah.
In fairness to the contractors or construction engineers, we need to, the board needs to know for what's going on here.
Very good.
So if you want to explain that.
Okay, I'll try. What you have is, you approved a contractor's or a construction contingency when you approved the guaranteed maximum price, so that when they run into issues that are not expected, that the contractor would have dollars to work with within that.
And that number is over eight-hundred thousand dollars.
It was eight-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand dollars. And then, the, it wasn't in the guaranteed maximum price, but also the board did approve an additional one percent, I think it was twenty-eight thousand dollars. That was an owner contingency. And as we progressed with this, some of these things that were changes, the, we had discussions that some felt that this was a owner contingency item, and we felt that it was a construction contingency. And we've had several discussions of whether what's in the scope and outside of the scope. And anyway, the point being is that you did approve a contractor's construction contingency, I'll call it, and they were fearful that if there was a major, major problem with the construction part of it, that they would then have to be responsible for some of those costs, that they didn't feel they should be, and we felt that until the construction contingency is pretty well-used up, we should not be coming to the board and asking for additional guaranteed dollars. So the language within this change order indicates that depending upon which contingency it is being obligated to, that if they could make a good argument that this was a surprise and to no fault of the contractors, that it would be a responsibility of the owner. Does that kind of explain?
Yeah, that covers it, it's the, I think, you know, I think what really boils down to, you know, gross maximum price should mean that until all other options have been depleted, and it was an argument that you've strongly made for quite some time, and, you know, and I think if you recall the presentation that we got from construction engineers is that they thought it would be very likely that we would see half of that returned to us anyway, because what isn't used in the contract contingency goes back to us.
Goes back to the order.
And furthermore, if it fell outside of the contract or contingency, we could end up paying additional fees, both to architecture fees and potentially to construction engineers themselves. And so until we actually would have to do that, it doesn't make sense to take that outside the scope. I think that's kind of what the county's arguments meant.
Our argument was.
So. Are there any questions or concerns?
Well, I was just looking at, now, some of this stuff they're taking out, like the visitation, video visitation system, are we not going to do it, or is that going to go to a different town?
It's being handled differently. It's still going, yeah, it's still going to be done, but it's-
This is what you're trying to explain here, I guess. This is going to be handled differently, we're not going to, it's still going to be done, but it's taken out of that. And is that the same with the padded cell revisions?
The padded cell went away. They didn't feel that that was a cost that was needed, and they feel they could handle it different ways than a padded cell. They felt that padded cells are not being used anymore. I don't know how to go into that.
You said it, they're just-
But, yes, but even more specific on the video visitation, they're still being installed, but how it's going to be paid for is through the commissaries that they buy phone cards and different things, the inmates do, and they make money on those, and the same people are installing the video visitations and the electronic equipment, and that is going to then be paid out of those commissary profits, let's say. So it's not going to be a county taxpayer dollar, it's going to be a operational-
And they're somewhat restricted on what they can spend that money on, and this is something that would qualify for that.
That's exactly right, good point.
I guess another big item I'll look is that plumbing sewer water connection fees. I mean, did we figure fees in there before, or who started with fees?
Yeah, well-
Was it more it?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gross, that is a very good question, because we have questioned that as well, but what happened in this, and especially with the jail, they submit their plans to the State Department of Corrections, and they also have to submit them to the state inspectors, the building inspectors. And they look at them, and they examine them, and they give then a preliminary review, but, so then we go, they came in and they asked for the guaranteed maximum price, and then after that, they said, oh, by the way, you need more fire suppression here than you have, or you need an announcator by these two doors. It maybe is not by code, but your fire marshal, I'm just using this as an example, your fire marshal requires that you have two announcators instead of one by here, so, and the same with the sewer and water connections, if there's a change in the structure, then they're charging more for the fees for the connections, and that's after their final review, not their preliminary review. So all costs aren't in there when you got your guaranteed maximum.
What happens, whether it's the state permit fees, the city permit fees, all of those, the dollar amounts are unknown at the time the gross maximum price is presented to us, and so they said that that has to come out of owner contingency, because it's not something that they included in the gross maximum price. So that's why you see there is coming out of a contingency.
It's like a big amount of fees.
Well-
The fees are huge, yes.
And that's a combination, because I think the, just the city permit fees for the LEC, I think was like forty-five hundred, just for the LEC.
Oh, yeah, I think it was probably more than that.
No, I think on the LEC it was more, because that was the very first change order.
Oh, the change, oh, okay.
Yeah, because for, and that was because, that was, the city fees were, that was just on the LEC.
Yeah.
It was forty-five hundred.
I know there was one announcator that was added, and that was the example I used, I do recall that one, so.
Well, I just wanted, we need to be clear on what that agreement fully stated, so.
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order, give it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried, thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, and then we'll, Nancy, if we, I saw Nancy come up, we'll take your item. This is a request to reach, purchase tax forfeited property. And we did get a memo from you, Nancy, and we did get the letter from Mr. Busby, and I understand that something happened today where he's unable to attend, but we still wanted to hear this, so.
Correct. So, okay. Mr. Busby, David and Mary, their property forfeited to the state of Minnesota for the non-payment of taxes. I spoke with city clerk, I knew there was water, it was current, electricity's current, all that kind of stuff. I did send a letter to Mr. Busby saying that we were going to be starting eviction on him, since it was obvious there was someone still on the property, and at that time, he came in and asked to repurchase. He did tell me that he had kind of let things slide, just because of the fact his wife recently ended up in a nursing home, and so then he came in right after he got the letter from myself. He is willing to pay all the back taxes and all the fees, and it is his home, so in my opinion, it would be a hardship for him to lose the place.
Motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? And is he aware, is there, do we have a timeframe for he has to come in and do all this stuff?
I spoke to him this morning, I did tell him, and by the end of the week.
Okay, very good. And he was good with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? This does meet with our past practices too, so it's, all right, there you go. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Okay, we're close to, well, Mark, let's take yours real quick. You were requesting a replacement.
I am requesting a replacement. We have one of our full-time permanent staff, our GIS specialist, who is the person that is responsible for maintaining our parcel fabric, primarily and some other of our GIS data. Our, the person in that position now has decided to go back to school, so we'd like to rehire.
Second. One second. And there's no backfilling here?
No, we don't have anybody else that does this kind of stuff.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right. Tim, here's Tim. All right, Tim, we are close enough to ten-ten now, we'll take this issue, and this is the consideration of Felton Prairie land sale.
I asked if there wasn't anybody else here, we didn't have to do that. Everybody's got a map, right?
Yeah, I think we're okay.
Good morning. Well, we've talked about this for a long, long time. This, the property's out in the Felton area. Over the course of the last couple of years, we've talked about it a little bit more seriously. And most recently, we've gotten a couple of appraisals from the DNR, and actually got them. Their appraisal, first appraisal was, we thought, relatively low. Second appraisal came in about a little over twenty-five thousand dollars higher, which gave us an appraised valuation of two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, four-hundred dollars. And in discussion with DNR, they did have, they do have the opportunity from time to time to be able to go ten percent over appraised values, so we asked if they would do that. That was approved by the division director, so we're looking at a valuation on the property of two-hundred-and-sixty thousand, forty dollars is the offer that DNR has made for two-hundred-and-fifty-four acres, which comes out to one-thousand, twenty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents per acre. You have the paperwork in front of you that the DNR provided. If you approve this sale, it's an option that was provided by them to make the sale go through, and then they also had a couple other things. One is that they will survey the property, so we know exactly what's going, but right now, the deed on it says two-hundred-and-fifty-three point, seven, eight acres, give or take, so. The other document that is with your packet is, the DNR's intent is to designate this a scientific and natural area, and in order to do that, they need county approvals. So what we have is an offer from the DNR for two-hundred-and-fifty-four acres of land for two-hundred-and-sixty thousand, forty dollars. I'm not sure what more I can tell you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I've approved the option contract, and that is agreeable and approved as to form and content, so we need a motion for the option contract, and then also a separate motion for the designation as a scientific and natural area, if the board sees fit. It's my understanding that they are done in conjunction, that with the sale of the, we can extend the option, but the sale would need to be supported by the classification as scientific and natural in order for the DNR to be interested and want to go forward with the sale.
I believe that's the case. Areas that have very high potential with the native flora and fauna, DNR designates them as scientific and natural areas. The bicentennial prairie has been designated an SNA. There's actually one up on County Route thirty-four, about, might be a quarter mile west of the access road to this particular property. It's a long skinny piece that is a scientific and natural area owned by DNR. If you look at the map, the DNR area is owned on the west side of these properties, or the county-owned properties, those are wildlife management areas. How they decide what they're going to call it, I guess I don't know.
The term scientific and natural area, is that defined within our code or zoning ordinances?
Our code?
Yes.
It's not in our code, it's just a designation that the DNR uses for certain properties that they acquire.
It's in state statute.
It's in state statute?
Yeah. So it's a land suitable and desirable for establishing and maintaining scientific and natural areas. So it doesn't really broaden it too much.
Just what you wanted to know.
Just what, yeah, I answered all your questions, but I think it's fairly plain, you know, it's a place, and I think everyone is aware of the value of this property in terms of, again, the flora, the fauna, those kind of things, and so rather than wildlife habitat, it's more scientific, and to keep the area natural and maintain it for posterity.
I just didn't know if there's something that we had to have defined in our land use.
I don't believe so, we would go with the definition that the DNR uses.
Yeah.
The attraction for them is the calcereous fen.
Yeah, the fen is a big attraction for them there, plus the prairie plants that grow there that they can harvest and get seed stock from.
And this property would then qualify for the annual tax payment?
Paying the local taxes?
Payment and local taxes?
Should be qualified, I mean, best of my knowledge, it qualifies for the bill.
And I think it's important to note that what we have been making on this property for a hay lease is-
A pit.
A fraction of what a pill payment would be.
Right. I think it's, obviously it's.
What was that, Commissioner, I didn't understand what that is yet.
We've had it leased out for hay at a very small amount, and so.
Not even what the pill payment would be?
For the county's perspective, it's, it's just kind of been costing us money. So, this is a way to liquidate land that I don't think the county should have anyway, it's a liability, get it back in the hands of the rest. I will make a motion to approve the, the, um, proposed lands designation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the land designation.
Are we doing it the wrong way around?
I'm sorry, well, the first one I have is the resolution, I'm sorry, I'll make a motion to approve the sale.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the sale. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, sign. Okay, now the land use designation.
I'll make a motion to approve the land use designation.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion carried. All right.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
The, uh, survey clause is something that we signed, that doesn't need, uh,
No.
That doesn't need a motion to discuss.
All right.
Mr. Chair, if we could have one more motion, uh, if you wouldn't mind, I mean, you could certainly sign, authorize the, as authority for the county, or the board could authorize Tim to, uh, to act as the selling agent for the county to close this, uh, we've run into that a couple of times recently.
I'll make a motion to designate him as the signing agent for this property.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Have you got original documents for the, for them to sign? So, all I got was an email, and I don't have that email anymore.
So, the documents just said your?
I think the documents that were included in the packet are signed.
Okay, just make sure that they're signed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim.
Yeah, because the document here has my name as the signatory. So, if we approve this document, it's got my name as the signatory, not Tim's. Yes, I mean, you just want to make sure you're.
Close sign.
We just have, they have to change.
Was that your intent, Brian, that Tim would actually be the signatory then? Or what have you run into in terms of closing, you need? My thought was that, the rea, the reason I did that is that if there's an issue that comes up with surveying going forward, that he can sign any additional. Today, we made the motion for Kevin and whoever to sign it, but my motion was the intent that anything additional that would need to be signed, Tim could do that without coming to us.
I thought his request was to sign the closing document, which is this.
Okay, uh, no, Mr. Chair, mine was the, uh, when they, when we actually close on the, on the deal, at the abstract company,
Yes.
they require an authorization from the county, and that's what you authorized today, is that Tim, on behalf of you, folks would sign over there, and we can do something.
I'm signing the purchase agreement.
That's, you're signing the purchase, correct?
Yes. Very good, all right, that's clear then, all right. Just want to make sure. All right, uh, Dave is not here yet, so we will, maybe we can start with our committee reports. Mr. Gross, do you want to step today?
Sure. Monday after our meeting, we had the PIC committee meeting, and, uh, there we just had a, a request to move and avoid the point six, which we tabled, and so, nothing further was done at that meeting. Tuesday, we had, um, county picnic, which was very well attended, and I really want to thank the committee for doing it. They set it up very nicely, and it really worked out great, and, uh, well, I guess having good weather really helps out a lot, too. So, it was really a good picnic, and, you know, thank the cook, Kurt, I did, and Kenny did a nice job getting all those hamburgers going. Wednesday, I went to drug court, uh, there again, same procedure again there, we had a graduate from drug court, and it's, uh, nice to attend that, uh, I think Judge, uh, Michelle was, nice job of those people. Wednesday afternoon, historical society, uh, pretty much routine stuff there, not much to report in that meeting, I guess. Planned pretty much for the, uh, that Bible, um, presentation, which will be a big thing this fall coming up, so. So, there's, that's all we had.
All right.
On the eighteenth, uh, I attended the adult mental health, local advisory committee meeting, and, uh, pretty much routine, nothing earth shaking there. Then on the next morning, we had the breakfast at Probst Field for the early childhood initiative, and there was stakeholders there, and they were all, they all gave their reports, and, uh, we had a tour of the Probst Field ECI facility.
Thank you, last week I also attended the county picnic, I echo Commissioner Gross's, uh, statement on those that arranged that, that's a, a good thing, I'm glad to be part of. Last week I had the planning commission meeting where we approved a conditional use permit on Highway Seventy-Five for a commercial storage facility, uh, that used to be the Ca, Castle, if you recall. That was one of the issues that prompted us to come up with the two-tier system for the urban overlay for the city of Moorhead, Commissioner Wayland and I were on that, so that was approved. And we had a continuation of a discussion for a establishment of event center in Morkin Township. That, uh, application was denied on basic grounds of, um, concerns with, with roads and safety. That, so that concludes my planning. I also attended the historical society meeting, Commissioner Gross reported well on that. It, I will note that it was, um, Jay Rosenfeld has served on that for a long time, it was her last meeting, so thank you to, uh, individuals that served on that. Last week I had the MetroCog meeting where we approved the, um, demographic study forecast that KLJ had come to report on at this meeting. It was, it's a phenomenal report, and, and I've encouraged, uh, the city of Dilworth, who will be hosting the intergovernmental retreat, to have them as a presenter, because there's a lot of really good information in here, especially as we look forward to, um, programs and needs for, uh, different demographics. Uh, we did approve a new pedestrian committee member, now that the city of Horace is part of that, uh, that went to them. And I had several, uh, executive committees, meetings yesterday, or last week with Lakeland, as we, um, were in the process of reviewing the six-month of our interim director. Uh, yesterday, I attended the Lakeland full board meeting at the facility in Detroit Lakes, where we did name Donna Baker as the permanent CEO for the agency. One thing to note is that they closed on the Moorhead property that joins, that neighbors them on the Safari Theater property, they were able to parcel out some of that for future ex, uh, expansion. The Alexandria facility is, uh, up and going, looking great, and, um, the collaboratives are working on a poverty training coming up in August, so margins continue to look good there. I've had several phone calls and emails on our Lake Fifteen conflict that was going on with several residents. Um, that's not going away, I think there's some more, um, meetings that'll come up this week. We did identify there's a, a survey issue, so, uh, Brian is going to work with Bruce Bang and try to see if we can't get that survey complete so that the culvert can get placed, but, um, unfortunately, it's not going away. Uh, it is worthy to note that the Law Library approved signing the contract for, uh, professional services that will happen, I believe, October first, we're hoping that that will be up and going. If you recall, that's been something we've talked about for a long time, and we will, uh, cover the cost of that with the enormous savings that we had by reducing our bulk print offering in the Law Library. I also had conversations with, um, the city of Saban, I see now that Dave's here. Dave, were you able to contact Saban in regards to the crossing?
Yeah, tomorrow about eleven o'clock, we're going to meet.
Okay, good, so they've got some, uh, they are excited about what that, uh, would be, and got some proposals for costs. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Wayland?
Oh, I do have one thing, I'm really sorry.
Sure.
Yesterday, uh, the, as part of our behavioral health for the Clay County, the new correctional facility, we've been looking at trying to figure out costs for adding additional hours for a professional to, uh, work with prisoners. And it's exciting to note that, um, we were approved by Lakeland yesterday for seventy-five thousand dollars in startup costs for what those services would be. Comes from an opportunity fund that they have, Rhonda Porter, yeah, worked really hard on getting that, and so it's exciting that that did get approved yesterday.
Is that a, is that a one-time?
A one-time stardom cost.
Very, very good, yeah.
Well, let's see, uh, I wish I would have been at the county picnic last week, but instead, we were, Kevin and I were in federal court, so, on the diversion lawsuit, so, which was, which was interesting, uh, the judge said he would, uh, rule sometime in the next thirty days, so. Sometime in the next two or three weeks, we should hear something on that, um. And, uh, we had a detention board meeting last week that I thought went very well. Kevin and Steve both did an excellent job of explaining to the board our position on our capacity issues and where we're at, and where we need to go in the future, and everybody was pretty supportive, I thought, so, uh, Cass County was very supportive and told everybody that they were, um, ready to make a, uh, commitment to, uh, becoming a long-term partner in that, uh, operation, so. I thought that went well, and, uh, I guess we'll have more information on that in the future, um. Let's see, uh, had a, um, yesterday, uh, Kevin and I were at, uh, interviews for the diversion authority executive director position, and we had, uh, three people from around the country that we interviewed, and, uh, I think we had some good candidates, and, uh, hopefully we'll be making a decision on this Thursday, uh, or sometime in the near future, uh, in terms of that position, and I think it'll be a good thing once we get somebody on board there. Uh, let's see, what else? Uh, yesterday, we had a jail update meeting, and, uh, if you can see, everything's going well with the jail and law enforcement center. Uh, the crane's been moved in, and they should start putting up walls next week, I think, is when, when that'll start, so. We'll start to see some significant changes there in the very near future. Uh, I think that was it for me.
All right, I'll give my report, then we'll bring up Dave here. Uh, Mr. Gross did talk about the personal issues committee meeting that we had, and, um, there was just basically one item there that we did table, uh, we need more information on that. Uh, Tuesday, I, I am also, sorry, we weren't able to make the picnic, but we were, Grant said, in federal court, um. You may have heard some comments that I stated when I got back from that publicly, that, uh, one of the suggestions from Minnesota DNR, that a viable option was still the Minnesota diversion, and, um, I think, um, I made it clear from my standpoint that, that is not an option, and I think I spoke, uh, on behalf of our board with that, with that, uh, as not being an option, so. Uh, then, um, we did have the West Central Regional Juvenile Center, uh, meeting, as, and Grant's summed that up pretty good. We'll proceed with, uh, those plans. I, I, I do want to comment, uh, Cass County, um, right now, their, um, their representatives have indicated, um, that it's likely that they will, will, uh, you know, have a significant investment into, uh, what we're planning here, but it, it has not been voted on by their board. So, it's just something that, that is, through the two of them, that are, one who serves on the, uh, law enforcement portfolio over there, and the one who serves on the juvenile committee, uh, both are supportive, and that's so is, I believe, the sheriff, so. It's just the process that it has to go through, um, there, so. Prairie Lake Solid Waste, we had a, a budget meeting last Friday, and that was, uh, quite interesting, but I, um, I still believe that we're on track for, um, meeting our, our expenditures with revenues for two thousand and seventeen, and, uh, we're, we're still trying to finalize the budget for two thousand and eighteen. And then, um, we did have yesterday, uh, in the morning, we had the three interviews for the executive position for the diversion authority, and then yesterday afternoon, the, um, construction semi, bi-weekly meeting, and I think all is going well, and I, you know, I think Grant said that they're going to start putting up walls on the correctional facility next week. And I think the timeframe to complete that, if I'm not mistaken, is like one month, and the, the walls will be up, and, uh, that'll look like a building in a month's time, so it's, uh, so this looks like it's outpacing the correctional facility, but that's going to change real soon. Correctional facility is really going to catch up. So, with that, uh, that, that also concludes my report. Brian, we'll do yours, I think, after we hear from Dave here, he's got it. Dave, do you want to come up then?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I've only got the one item, and, uh, what it would be is, it's kind of a second part of our H-back upgrade at our joint facility. Um, we've been out there a little over ten years now, and, um, I think it was about December eighth or so, I brought a request to the board to move forward to phase one, I think that was like around seventy thousand dollars or so. Uh, it's something that we have been working, uh, at, at our department with, um, MinDOT in the city. We've got a bunch of, uh, controls and actuators and, and heating units and things that weren't working very well. Phase one took care of all the sensors, actuators, switches and things, and then once that work got done, we had to make sure the remaining things talked back and forth, and there was this, there was a lot of unknowns at that point. Those have since been identified, um, the comment I did get from MinDOT, they do have a guy that's, that's, you know, this isn't really my area at all, so I'm trying to learn as we go along, but, uh, Brian from MinDOT, this is kind of his deal, and he, he figured that the laundry list for phase two would be a lot more worse or bigger than it was, so I guess it was positive. Uh, there, the estimate at this point is about just under twenty thousand dollars for phase two. Uh, there's, the only remaining items after this then would be some, uh, carbon monoxide and, um, some of these sensor things for air quality, and we'll work on that too. There's some things that, uh, I think OSHA recently changed that do affect a couple of our other buildings, our Barnesville shop and our New Anfield shop, they've got to have certain carbon dioxide testers that, uh, you know, if you get big heavy equipment running in these things, they, they let you know, and you either got to open the doors or have it work with your air exchange equipment so that it gets fresh air in and out of there, so. Uh, other than that, phase two, we should pretty much get our building up and running. Uh, what we've really run into problems with is if there was a holiday on like a Monday, uh, it was kind of scheduled so that it would be a little cooler during the times when no one was there, but, gosh, it took probably most, most of the day, the following day, we'd come in, there'd be sixty degrees up front, and then there's times where it'd be ninety degrees in the summertime, and, uh, it'd be really nice to have a building that's got proper ventilation, heating, cooling and ventilations.
Motion to approve the request for phase two. Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, same, motion carried. Thanks, Dave. All right, Brian, uh, we have your committee report.
Well, well, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Activities for your meeting.
Um, I, I did, uh, we've talked about this a little bit before, and, and, um, I mentioned it earlier in the day. Joe Olson and Nick from, uh, Construction Engineers, uh, we discussed the sprinkler landscaping issue, and I touched on that when Joe was here, so, um, I think that's a real positive thing, it's, it's, um, so it's, but we had a meeting in regards to that. I did attend that PIC meeting as well, and then it was agreed at the PIC meeting to have a follow-up meeting, uh, with the, um, with Kathy and Tim and Bruce and things, so we did have that follow-up meeting. that follow-up meeting. And frankly, they, the PIC meeting we had was probably premature, because they had not discussed the arrangement with the employee that they expected to go to that Point Six. So we discussed a lot of avenues about that and the concerns of the commissioners that were present, and they're going to have a discussion with that employee to see where it goes. So there's not much sense in bringing any proposal forward until we know where it sits. So there's some more to be, more to come on that, so. I had another meeting with Nick from Construction Engineers, and we discussed the change order and some other things in regards to the project. And then we also had a follow-up meeting after that with Andrew from Wank, and in regards to the tanks and the soils and things, and the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and then the Petro Fund, that we were expecting a fair amount of reimbursements from those tanks. Now, Wank Associates is saying that we would get some, they expect some reimbursement, but not near to the level that we were hoping for. So there will be more to come on that as well, but we'll keep you informed as we go along on those. Just to thank the commissioners, I attended the Clay County picnic last Tuesday as well, and just want to thank you commissioners for supporting that. I think it's really a good motivator, and I don't want to say PR, but I think the employees really appreciate you folks helping out with that and doing that, sponsoring that picnic. There was a lot of positive comments, very much so. I had a phone meeting with the architect to talk about some of the issues that we've talked about here, so the change orders and different things, so had that follow-up. Did have Lori and I met with Kirk and on his budget, and so that was quite an extended meeting. We changed quite a few things, or suggested some changes, and you saw the results of that today, I guess. I did spend some time with Michael Stein from the Barnesville paper.
What's it called again, the record?
Record Review.
Record Review, and I forwarded that article to you folks before he printed it. Had a budget meeting with, Lori and I had a budget meeting with Extension, pretty uneventful. We just talked about their budget and things. The same with Joe and Georgia on the Family Service Center and the Building Committee, or the Family Service Center and the grounds, building and grounds. Attended the juvenile advisory meeting, as it's already been reported on. Again, just some very positive vibes for the need there. I think the need has been talked about for two years now, and there was a lot more talked about that, and I think everybody's in the mood that something positive needs to happen out of there. So I think the timing is right to, we needed to bring that to our board and discuss it more in depth as well of what we see as some positive solutions going forward. We also, in regards to the juvenile and the Family Service Center, Georgia had contacted me, and she's having some movement or asked for movement within the Family Service Center, and it's involving quite large parcels of rent, three thousand parcels and things, square feet, I should say. And we just felt that it's a time that we should really decide and look at who occupies what in our Family Service Center. And frankly, if the juvenile center moves forward, we have probation in the juvenile center right now, state probation, and we also have the juvenile administration in the juvenile building. And that's not too far down the road if we make some changes there. So we had a meeting in regards to that space. We involved some of the major players over in the Family Service Center, Rhonda and Kathy, public health and social services, because they also want to move around on some floors, because they're on different floors and things. So we just feel that we really need to step back, take a look at the occupation of that facility, see if we need to move people around somewhat, and we'd really like Mr. Chair to have some involvement from the county board on that committee, so we get a sense of where you feel that we should be going. And you do have a capital improvement committee, and we were wondering if we could reach out and include this as part of that capital improvement committee to include that rent issue, if that would be permissible.
Oh, I think that makes sense. I think that currently is Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Hane, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, they are, they're on that.
Yeah, that's fine. This kind of falls in line if we're looking, you know...
For capital improvements, absolutely. It's going to be a shift, and we're going to need your guys' insight as to where you want to go.
I think that's very appropriate. I, unless Commissioner said something different suggestion, I just think that falls right in line with what they review anyway, so.
Well, then I don't think we need a motion for the committee, just on a consensus that that would be part of that committee, so. Very good. Oh, thank you very much. That's going to be really helpful. Then I had a diversion administrative advisory meeting on Friday morning. A lot was talked about, the new process for the director that you guys are going through right now. Construction meetings was yesterday afternoon, the correctional facility and law enforcement center. I'm really pleased with the way things are going there. I think they're on schedule, and, gosh, it's just, and I understand Commissioner Gross has considered this morning some of the changes, and that was kind of complicated to us, too, and especially these things where you get preliminary approval and things, and then they continue to review the plans and say, oh, they found a closet or a door here before they issued final improvement that they wanted changed, and things like that. And it's really to no fault of the owners, the architects or the construction engineers that now the inspection, they want something different. So it is a little complicated in that regard, but that jail, the correctional facility is a very complicated facility, so. And then progress on the parking lot out front, what I've been told is that very possibly Thursday morning, that will be open for business, and then the one in front of the Family Service Center will be shut down for about a week. They'll do the mill, and then they're going to do an overlay there, and then they'll move to the northwest parking lot. But by next Tuesday, your front of your courthouse parking lot should be open again, and you guys have seen it. I think they're just really doing a super job.
So I suppose there will be some sort of a instruction memo that'll go out regarding change in parking today?
Going out today.
Called today?
Yeah.
Okay.
That northwest parking lot is not going to be paved yet, or is that...
Oh, yes, that's concrete, yep.
It's been included in the bid price.
That was included in the bid price. And then I just worked on some personnel evaluations, so that's about all I had last week.
But just to follow up to that, and this is something that maybe some input from the board would be good, too, as we move forward, but we're looking at signage, we were talking about signage issues yesterday at our construction meeting, and, you know, when you, when you look at being able to have something for our citizens to help guide them in terms of whether they're going to the juvenile center, whether they're going to the correctional facility, that we need to have some sort of signage. If you go to some of the, all these new places where they've done this, there's these signs, and I, you know, I suggested yesterday that, you know, I think we've been kind of planning one on the north, northwest...
Northeast.
Northeast corner up here, that describes the entrance for the law enforcement center, but I think we should also be considering one that would go right out here on this corner of Eighth and Eleventh.
Yep.
That would give some direction that says the juvenile center is to the east, and so is the correctional, so people know where to go, because otherwise they're going to not know. And then also, I suggested that even over on Ninth Street, that's a major corridor, and there's still people, we now have Cass County involved with our juvenile center, we could have people coming from the North Dakota side coming up on Ninth, and so we need to have some signage, and not all of that has been included in what we're planning here, so. I know we've asked Brian and Georgia and...
Matt.
And Matt, and I think, I don't know, Darren...
Kind of the parking committee, yes.
Parking committee to review that and come up with something, but that's something that I think is going to be important for us to deal with. We might have to come up with, within, maybe we can still find some fun dollars within the project to do those things.
Sure. Well, Mr. Chair, like you suggested, we want Jenny Schmeraz's office to be easily located on campus, so that's just a little humor.
I thought you were going to say proper parking.
Oh, I see, okay.
Oh, I never understood.
Employee of the decade.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, very good. Thank you. I think with that, can we get any...
I don't think you...
All right. Colleen, anything else for us? I know you would ask everybody about the MC conference to let you know.
Oh, and next week, we've got that Night to Unite luncheon on Tuesday, so you can see, that starts at eleven, so if we can be done with time to get there, what we got.
Where's the Copper Bridge event, Senator?
Yeah, I don't know where that is.
First street, so.
That's where I posted.
In Maine, in Farlow, Maine.
All right, so it's...
Should be Teamsters.
Oh, okay, very good. So we'll plan to be done with our meeting by ten-thirty, right? Very good, thank you, Werdert.